All right. I call the City of Mount Vernon November 4th council meeting to order. Not aware of any changes to the agenda we have in front of us.
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications, anybody that would like to address the council? Please do so now. Not seeing anyone in the audience. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of council minutes from the October 21 meeting and appoint Jane Boudak to the HPC.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you to Janet for willing to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. Next item is resolutions for approval. Resolution 11-4-2019A, accepting the public improvement installation for Ston Brook Sixth Edition subdivision. Do you want me to do both? I know we'll have to have separate resolutions, but...
Yeah, separate resolutions, but I would speak to both because they're...
Okay. And then it goes for the Seventh Edition as well for Ston Brook. But yeah, we'll have to have a separate motion for both.
So the final plats have been approved. They had some punch list items that they needed to complete on the public improvements. Once that was approved, those are complete. We have correspondence regarding a storm sewer outlet from the riprap that they did and some of the silting that's there. They might have to go back in and fix, but beyond that, everything else is ready to be accepted. So I did receive a letter today from V&amp;K Engineering recommending that we approve, but I didn't have time to include that in your email. So at this point, like I said, once we approve the improvements, they now become the city's responsibility. And then we'll have a series again of resolutions, public hearings in regards to the TIF for each of these locations. So it's not quite done yet, but quite happy. I think two or we're either up to two or three houses that have sold now out there.
This is at Ston Brook or the...
Ston Brook, yes. The latest being 500,000?
And there were what, like 14 lots, 17 lots?
There were 16 lots in the Sixth Edition. And the Seventh Edition had nine, eight of which are duplex or condo.
Gotcha. Okay. Excellent.
Any basements been dug on Seven?
I don't know if they've gotten to the basements yet. I believe two permits have been pulled for two separate lots.
Does that cover both of them? For anything else you need to add for either Six or Seven?
No, nothing. Like I said, other than I do want to point out that this spring when we had the rains, we had some issues. Some minor mistakes were made and they had some issues on neighboring properties. And I will say that Boomerang did take care of that. So...
All that being said, I'll make motion to approve resolution number 11-4-2019A, accepting the public improvement installation for the Ston Brook Sixth Edition subdivision.
I'll second.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Rose?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
And I'll move approval of Resolution 11-4-2019B, accepting the public improvement installation for Ston Brook Seventh Edition.
I'll second that.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Roddowich?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yep.
Okay. Let me get caught up here. Next item, Resolution 11-4-2019C, approving the annual financial report for fiscal year 2019.
So when we close out the year, we have to go back through and provide a report to the state on actual numbers. Nothing really to write home about unless it's just kind of verifying the numbers to the state of Iowa. So...
Is this something we do every year for this one and the next one?
It is something we do. So that's the annual street report, the audit. I mean, all these items are done yearly, so...
Anybody have any questions for Chris? Otherwise entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 11-4-2019C, annual financial report for fiscal year 2019.
I'll second that.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Weisler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddowich?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, kind of the same thing. Resolution 11-4-2019D, approving the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year 2019 to the Iowa Department of Revenue.
This came out of the proposed TIF changes, I think, like seven years ago. So the state just requires a report, what we're doing with our TIF, how we're utilizing it. So if we don't submit it by December first, then we risk being able to levy TIF.
So I did have one question on this one. The, I don't even know what page, page six, the income housing for urban renewal. So it zeros all down the board. Is that because we don't use TIF for urban housing?
Well, it's because both of those two TIF housing projects haven't established a value or a rebate yet. So if you remember, earlier this year, we passed some resolutions that are related to spring meadows. But the way that it works is each one of the phases has its own separate 10-year deal. And then typically it takes almost a year and a half at a minimum to get the house on the tax roll. And it's their taxes that we're using to make the rebate. So it's almost a two-year window before they'll, you'll start to see it. So there is a chance, won't guarantee it, but there is a chance you will see the Spring Meadow Heights subdivision on next year's report.
Okay. I just, and I wanted, because we'd been talking about income and especially...
You won't see zeros moving forward.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. Thank you. Having said that, I would move approval of the urban renewal report for fiscal year 2019.
I'll second.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Herman?
Yes.
Roddowich?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
All right. Next item, motions for approval, consideration of claims list. Anybody has any questions? Otherwise entertain a motion on the claims list when ready.
Steve, now open an account for police station construction. So that's trying to get real here, so...
I would also note the wellness center operations had $1.
Yes, it does.
Really moving over there. I like that. That's... Was that a soda for one of you guys? It was an A pen. Solid.
I can't explain.
Made me laugh.
Yes. So...
Oh, it was, I see what it was. It was a test of the system.
It's a test to see if it worked. Yeah, that's exactly what it was.
Glad to see that's happening. That's great.
Doug is very excitingly getting quotes. And there has been work actually that's already taking place over there.
Yeah.
It's a shot of some...
Inside and out, right?
It's a, I'm been happy that, so Michael making the switch, who's the new kind of public works employee and started charge of maintenance, they've done some work. The officers themselves have done work. There's some volunteers that are going to do some painting in there. So yeah, it's moving along.
I'd be willing to bet that that's the sort of thing that if we did a workday, there was some, I mean, if there was something where we needed, you know, if we put 15 people against it for five hours or something like that, we could rally some people.
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge for us right now is getting an architect in there to make sure that we're not crossing any boundaries as far as renovations go.
Tear something out we shouldn't have.
The load bearing.
So whether it's relevant or not while we're on the topic, I heard that there might be a school that's interested in the piano there? Has anybody heard that or...
They just bought one before we got it.
Okay.
So I don't know that they're interested in it for sure.
Yes.
Just got a green.
Okay.
New doorway.
Okay.
I mentioned it a couple months ago.
Yeah. That was our first thought, too. We're getting them appraised, both the piano and the doorway, because we have no idea what their value is.
Yeah.
I do, I have had people approach me that were members of the church that have asked for pews. And we're talking about bringing an auction, a couple of different auction services in to just look around and see how they feel.
I think it's good to monetize what we can to...
Nick and Matt both have things that they need to get rid of as well, so we're just trying to incorporate it into one big...
Big sale.
Get it done.
Sounds good.
All right. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the claims list.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of pay application 11 for the LBC. Chris?
Yeah, it is for $891,623.98. I did just have the mayor and councilperson Herman over there. They're making progress. A lot of the fridged glass is in. The stairways are in. They have finalized the vapor barrier on the flooring. So the manufacturer changed what vapor barrier they wanted or specified after the project was already let. So we did get them locked down. Basketball hoops, I did, I did ask the two individuals that were there tonight, we are going to get a credit, so I think I'm going to politely tell the architects tomorrow that we're okay with the black basketball hoops instead of the white, which won't make them happy, but they'll survive.
Do we, why, do we care?
I don't think so.
Well, if you don't know that they're not supposed to be black, and we're talking about the hardware that is coming down off the ceiling, you wouldn't know the difference.
I think it'd be too much white anyway personally.
But their goal was because they pull up, just to get the blend into the rest of the ceiling, which from the community center aspect, I can kind of understand for a six-week lead time, and they're willing to give us a credit.
Yeah.
I think black is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Couple of cans of Sprite.
So you'll see that taken to order and you might hear some architects crying and say, "You're having tomorrow."
That's all right.
Anybody have any questions? Otherwise entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the pay application number 11 for the LBC in the amount of $891,623.98.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion and consideration of pay application number five for the 2019 water wastewater treatment improvements.
So this pay application is for $107,784.61. Anybody that's driven by that project, it's kind of a money mess right now, but they are making progress there as well. We did indicate, or V&amp;K actually indicated to the state that we're concerned about meeting the testing, because the testing actually stops in November. So do some of the plant testing between November and I believe February. So they've asked for an extension until that February or March date when they resume testing to meet that portion of the requirements of the work. We'll continue to progress some of the testing, though. We'll get past that November, I think it's like 15th or first or something. So just a heads up that we, V&amp;K, to ask for an extension on that portion. It shouldn't affect the project at all. It's just, once it's all in, then the V&amp;K has to be tested and we're getting into that window where we don't.
And I assume we're probably not the only ones asking for an extension based off the weather?
I'm assuming not, since we had the plows out in October.
Yeah. Exactly.
So I'll move approval of pay application number five in the amount of $107,784.61.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of construction estimate and project scope for the First Street overlay project. Chris?
So this is a project that Lynn County is actually taking the lead on. They are going to carry the debt for basically two years. They'll separate that into three payments for us. The amount of our portion is $426,496.63 to bring it from our west city limits all the way to Third Avenue.
And where, give me like a landmark for our western city limit. Like what do we...
Cross the bridge, past Scobie Road.
Okay, that chunk that we did for the under thingy.
That's where our portion starts.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. So basically from there to Third Ave.
Now, I will say, like the bridge and maybe right by the Fox Culvert could be areas that we'll talk about, because we plan to do the wagon pass as well. We believe we've almost secured a, the go-ahead with that scenario. So working to get that done sometime in probably fiscal year 20 as well. So for the most part, though, it'll be, we will be affected May through August, trying to coincide when the school's out.
And to just get an idea, if we were to do this, I assume this 426 is, I mean, where does, like if we were going to do it, do you have an idea? I mean, is that competitive? What are we looking at?
We discussed, we discussed the same stretch, although we didn't, I don't think we took it all the way to the city limits, but we did discuss jumping downtown and then going out the other direction, and it was close numbers.
Yeah. A private contractor gave us a quote two years ago from going basically from the viaduct to the cemetery, similar distance. And that was even going through downtown, I believe, at that time. And it was almost 700,000. So I feel like we're getting a pretty good discount using Lynn County piggybacking off of that project. That is the engineer's estimate, so this will go up for bid.
Okay. Yeah.
And then the, Lynn County has requested that the contractor know they can't do this until after Cornell is out of session. And then we're going to put in there also, hopefully they can skip through Heritage Days. So it would affect the parade route, but that's about the only festival I foresee it.
Gotcha. Yeah, because everything else, because I thought the same thing with Chalk to Walk, but it stops at the churches, so that...
Yeah. And we, Nick and I, we contemplated this for a very long time as far as do we continue to push through the downtown, because Chalk to Walk last year, I was very impressed with the artists.
Using the cracks.
Yeah.
Exactly. But... Adds character.
We do believe, A, that more time needs to be had with the downtown business to talk about disruptions. We also need to talk about infrastructure that's extremely old in that area.
As long as we're digging holes, yeah.
Honestly, we have to really kind of evaluate whether or not we put another overlay on the downtown, because it's just kind of a Band-Aid in that area.
Yeah.
Or we talk about full reconstruction, so...
There's a lot of clay pipes and stuff under there, isn't there?
Yeah.
Play-Doh.
It's kind of a mess. Thankfully, a lot of it's deep enough right now that...
Probably Play-Doh at this point.
Nothing's happening.
What are you going to...
One of those pressing extruder things.
Yeah. Anything else you wanted to add, Nick?
No, I just want to make sure it was the estimate and that Cornell, we're waiting until they're out of session, so...
We might, once this project is done, within a couple of years of this project being complete, again, jumping the downtown and then going to the other side of the First Street Community Center and looking at finishing that, and then coming back to the downtown as far as attacking that central. That's going to be significantly more expensive than either end.
And I assume the detour would be similar to when we did that culvert, just 30, basically?
Actually, you'd be able to use Scobie. When we were doing the culvert, it was past Scobie, so people that were coming from Cedar Rapids, we did have a few upset individuals. So they'll be able to get to Scobie Road for most of the project, not all, but they'll, we hope to use that...
Oh, like come down Springville Road and then take Scobie into, to come across the bridge and everything or something?
Most times with an asphalt overlay, they'll have one lane of traffic.
Okay.
So it'll be alternating for...
Okay, so they'll just have temporary stop signs or something like that?
Yep, for 90% of the project.
And you can drive on almost right away, right?
There'll be a disruption, but not completely, we don't have to close the road completely typically.
This encompasses taking two inches off and then placing the...
Full two-inch overlay. We're, we've discussed with Lynn County, and it's in the project bid, technical terms, like a fancy interlayer that they claim will last longer, so we're trying that out with...
It doesn't allow water infiltration in case it cracks, is that...
It's supposed to be harder asphalt. I don't even know if there's such a thing. It's a different composition is what we've been taught in Cedar Rapids, did it on First Avenue like 20 years ago, in typical life of asphalt's 15 years ago, or 15 years. So, you know, you're getting more use out of that interlayer. And it doesn't cost like, it's not like double regular asphalt.
Good. I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah.
I think so, too.
Agreed.
With that said, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Lynn County proposal outlining the overlay on First Street from the city limits to Third Avenue Northwest.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of membership to the Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance. So again, this is, we had representatives, was that two? That's been a couple of council meetings ago now, so obviously...
They discussed inclusion into the brochure that they were putting together, which we moved forward with. They also discussed inclusion into the alliance itself. So about a week after the meeting, I received this request to join the alliance with kind of a full membership of $3,500. For me, this is an extremely cheap way to stay in the mix and utilize their services. So I would, I recommended this four years ago. I would recommend it today. I think it's worth it.
And this would be annual?
Yes.
Yep. With everything we have going on, I think it'd be crazy not to, quite honest. Bypasses and housing developments and...
Yeah, I think it's money well spent. Obviously, they're recruiting workforce into the corridor, and that workforce needs to know that we're here. We've got a lot to offer the community.
Their scope now is a lot broader than what the chambers of commerce or whatever you want to call it were. They've got a large, large staff and they, if you read the materials that they've presented, there's a, there is a lot of job training and recruiting.
Right, and their reach is a lot further than we can get on our own with that. So I'll move to approve membership into the alliance for $3,500.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of future development agreement with John and Amanda Ronberg regarding the parking lot. I did reach out to Chris, because I wasn't exactly sure what they were asking, so everybody has the invoiced amount or the bid for 28, 840. Now, they're not asking that we pay that entire amount. Obviously, we could if we so, you know, chose that, but obviously they're just asking for help. Chris, then whatever you want to add to that as well.
So the east end, obviously, of kind of the Main Street area, we've utilized this parking lot a lot. CDG has utilized this parking lot a lot. One of the discussion items was we have not historically charged businesses for the parking areas in front of their locations on Main Street.
Do you mean like when we have events? Is that what you're talking about?
No, when we, when we do improvements, like we usually cover, they cover the sidewalks, but anything beyond that, we cover. Well, in this situation, we're utilizing a private parking lot quite often for the 14 events that we have through. So John and Amanda, obviously, if you've been down there, they've already completed it. They needed to get that done before this year. They've never closed it off to city events, although they cut it as a private parking lot. So what I'm asking tonight is, we have the ability to utilize funds for the downtown streetscape at this location. Where would you like that number to be? So the total cost is 28,000. We could enter a development agreement to cover a portion to all of those costs, depending on what you have. We have over $200,000 in the downtown streetscape now, so the cash is there. It really kind of is up to you.
I don't remember a time on council then. Obviously, Mayor, have we done, Sue, do you know, have we done anything like this in the past where we've used funds to...
So you utilized TIF funds in the downtown previously, I believe, for renovations before Main Street became kind of a significant funding mechanism. This will be an individual development agreement, I think geared specifically towards that parking So have you done anything specifically like this? No. I think, is this going to be something that you're going to see more often? Not with these parameters, but you're going to see other development agreements come in front of the council as Highway 30 bypass and things like that come forward. So I, like I said, I couldn't find or think of anything specific.
Yeah, I couldn't either.
But I'm always one that takes it on a case-by-case basis, based upon the merits of what we're trying or attempting to do here.
So just for clarity, they own that entire lot from the edge of their building all the way over to Pollyanna's building?
Yeah, and they've got some sort of...
I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either.
There's some sort of mutual agreement for everybody that utilizes that parking lot, but John and Amanda, I believe, own that lot.
Wow.
And then everybody utilizes.
So that's what I was going to say.
At one time, when I was discussing this with all of the individuals using it, when it was a store, there was a time where that individual that owned the store got upset, and that's why you see the fencing, and they did close the parking lot off.
It used to be a grocery store, though.
Yeah, they could. I mean, technically speaking, it's private. They can put a gate...
It was a grocery store, wasn't it? And then it was an auto parts store for a while.
Yeah. He used to have the best donuts.
Yeah, after school.
Yeah. Probably before school, but yeah.
You're not necessarily voting on anything. I just kind of need some direction as if I'm, you know, we've, we've talked about this briefly before, some sort of agreement to work on them with them. I just kind of need direction as far as development agreement on where you want to be with the number. They actually got a really good price on it, so...
I would, I would say about half. I mean, I mean, that would, the way the city uses it and everything, but to pay it all, I wouldn't see, I wouldn't, I wouldn't set that precedence.
No.
Not at all.
You'd be perfectly comfortable at half as well.
What's the product lifecycle for this three-inch asphalt overlay?
Good question.
Well, it's the same thing. It doesn't get a lot of heavy truck traffic.
Not a hell of a headache.
It should be 15 to 20 years as well. You know, as I explained to John, the biggest issue over there is, again, ceiling cracks and making sure that water getting under. There are, there's an old foundation that is, cuts the parking lot in half going north-south. Before they did the overlay, you could actually see that they ground that foundation down a little bit. I think where that hump was is that foundation will...
Eventually work its way up.
And so it kind of, but, so it could potentially do that again without removing it altogether. It's kind of difficult, but they also did some work to kind of alleviate, or try to alleviate some of the water coming off that parking lot at Pollyanna's garage and things like that, so...
Yeah. I think that's more than fair. I mean, I think it's hard to argue with that.[1720.51]
Yeah, for this 20-year lifecycle, it's 50 bars a year.
I mean, for the amount of work or use that we get out of it.
Yeah, for their willingness to share with us.
So I will, I will talk to John. He'll have an actual agreement to vote on, so.
Kind of like what we did with the high school, you mean, in terms of in detail about use of festivals and that kind of stuff, you think?
It won't be that detailed. Typically, though, when we're, when we utilize any funds for a situation like this, we will, like I said, put a development agreement that just kind of recognizes what it's for.
Okay.
Most of your development agreements are going to be TIF-based. This won't, but.
Do you require any sort of motion for this, Chris? Even though the action says motion?
Possible.
Just wanted to make sure that we're good. If you're good, we're good. All right, next item, discussion and consideration of creating an Iowa, is it Iowa, Association of Municipal Utilities? I'm not sure what that stands for.
So IMU is, if you're, is talking about this. When I first got here, we had no safety program to speak of. Our mod factor for workman's comp was extremely high. I would say within the first six months, Nick, me coming, we joined, and you supported us joining the Eastern Iowa Association, Eastern Iowa Safety Organization, ESI, A-S-S-O. So we're with Solon, Tipton, Wilton, DeWitt.
Drennan.
Drennan. So we're part of a group and we pay, I think approximately $8,000. Is it $8,000?
I looked it up tonight, it was $5,000.
$5,000. To be a part of this, and then we have monthly safety programs that they have in multiple locations, so we don't always have to send, they try to have like two locations per event so we can mix and match the guys, but they're talking about adding kind of a regional safety coordinator, and I'll kind of let Nick describe as he goes to the meetings, but.
Yeah, so their goal would be to basically take 10 to 12 communities. They said their, their ideal number would be 10 to 12 and ideally 10, but this person would then be, live in that area. So that'd be kind of a regional safety coordinator for those group of cities. Now, you know, we could be part of a group with DeWitt, so, you know, that coordinator has to divvy up their time evenly based on that, but how they kind of base the payment is on your population and how many employees you have. So with them doing this regional coordinator, we'd have better access to safety, safety meetings held just basically for our city and for our needs, and then helping us with any kind of in-house safety stuff such as, you know, SDS stuff. We're never quite up to code on that.
All right, help me with that acronym.
Inter-Safety Data Sheets.
Yeah.
Material Safety Out sheets.
It used to be.
Yes.
MSDS.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. So just getting programs like that involved and they've talked about starting a safety program throughout the city as a group, safety program with kind of the direction that we went since we've joined the committee. I'm not sure if we necessarily need that, but I think that's something that that regional coordinator would look at and go, okay, you really need to up your game on, you know, in-house safety such as extension cords or whatever it may be, giving us more mock OSHA walkthroughs coming out when we're actually working in the field and checking how our guys are, you know, monitoring that. Not that, you know, when I'm not out there or Chris isn't out there, you know, our guys self-monitor, so not saying that that's something we necessarily need, but they, they sometimes see stuff that we're not, so.
So the idea here would be communities pooling a resource to put together, to create a position that would then act as a resource for these various communities?
Yeah, so to give you an example, like right now, we don't have a safety coordinator designated for the city of Mount Vernon. What we have is each department head basically kind of in charge of their individual employees. This position would provide a resource for us to make sure that, A, that our SDS sheets are being filed now that we have three, three additional building sites, two additional buildings right now. That will be pretty important. We have resources to reach out to right now through ICAP and the Iowa League of Cities because we're, we're members, but we don't have anybody designated specifically to us. And the cost is, I want to say, it's kind of, I mean, it's a decent amount. We're estimating somewhere around 17,000, 18,000.
They had 15,000, but that was based on a lot of cities joining and it's random cities of size.
Would that also include that 5,000 or would that 5,000 then go away?
Yeah, so it'd be a $10,000 increase.
Okay. And then would we have any savings on insurance rates?
Well, so we've already saved $20,000. Our mod factor over the past four years has gone down and our insurance, our work count insurance has decreased by 20,000 already. So I think membership into just the safety program alone has been beneficial. But I, you know, so if you follow the Gazette at all, some of the articles relating to you and I, for instance, the death that they had, they, I think they indicated five serious safety violations. So this position could come in and consult on a regular basis. Right now, we get, get it every year. We meet with somebody from, from IMWCA and ICAP. So I will say that based upon the money that we give them, we do definitely get our money back. So the 5,000 that we pay in the, the safety programs, they provide, you know, exactly what they say they're going to provide and they change year to year. So I am comfortable that they are going to be able to do this. They did kind of test pilot this in another portion of the state and it's worked, so they're trying to expand it statewide. And larger communities either have their own safety director or they're partnering with the county to kind of have a safety director for the entire county, but this would be probably a more economical way for us for $10,000, give or take, be a sixth to a seventh of the cost of hiring somebody to do the same.
So it's about a $100,000 a year job, is what you're talking about?
No, it's probably, it's probably 60 to 70. The $10,000 is just a portion for the person, but it's about 60 to 70.
But 10 times 10 is 100,000.
They, they have indicated 130,000 is what it takes for this person to come live within the 10 communities.
Travel.
Yeah, travel.
Travel, office space, benefits.
That's what they've indicated. Our portion is 16,000.
It's not 130,000, but the, the whole.
Right. That's a pretty good job right there.
It is a good job. And to be quite honest with you, they're kind of hard jobs to fill.
Is this a private or public job? Is this a private run? I mean, what is this?
IMU, it's not.
I don't know, they only work with municipalities.
It's not. IMU is a lot like the Iowa League of Cities, so I would say they're more public, but they're not public entity.
But it's not municipality or something.
Yeah, they're directly towards governing bodies.
Are you just looking for guidance to say, yeah, keep looking into it, but we're not going to say yes now?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't finalized the details and they're kind of, just trying to gauge the interest levels of the cities that they're part of this to see if there is, if, if eight of the cities come back and say, no, we're not interested.
I guess, I mean, you guys, and, you know, Nick and Doug and Matt and everybody, you guys are on the front lines. I mean, do you think this would make, keep our guys safer? I mean, would this be beneficial to them?
I think, you know, for two years, does it be very beneficial if they can get us up to code on some of the things we might not be up to code with? They're still going to offer their same program as is. I just don't know how many city, like, let's say 10 cities jump ship and go to this new program. Well, now for our guys to go to safety training, we might be, the closest place might be DeWitt or it might be, you know, Ankeny or something. So not really wanting to go away from the group as a whole and have to travel further just for, you know, our four-hour class that we try to keep up on, get stuff to train.
I would say from an efficiency standpoint of a staff, so as opposed to trying to figure out how we're going to fit this training in for, you know, at least four different department heads, now we have a resource that we can reach out to and not have to go to that, that specific training per se. So I do believe that portion of it alone is a benefit, but like I said, the one time that I've been involved in an OSHA-related experience, the fine was initially 10,000 that OSHA, OSHA cut in half, so it was five, five grand for one violation, so.
So there's no long-term commitment with us either, right? We could, we could participate for a year or two, two, like you're suggesting, and then see how it's.
Yeah, we haven't seen the specifics. I, I don't know if they're, typically when they do this, it's, they'll usually want like a two to three year commitment simply because they're relocating somebody, but.
Which makes sense, but after that point, we could reevaluate this.
If it's not working, it's not working, but now that, I mean, we are necessarily growing a, our full-time employees, but we are growing our staff.
I think it makes sense to look into it.
I think it does too, especially with those, those new sites that we're getting involved in.
Well, and all the, all the temporary folks that are going to come into the wellness center, that, that kind of worries me because that isn't necessarily what they're going to be thinking about.
Right.
It's a priority.
I don't know if that the LBC is allowed to have CPR training, but it'd be great if that person could come down.
Yeah, the entire site.
On short notice and say, hey, we've got.
That's great.
Regulations are constantly changing.
Yeah.
Coming more and more strict. So Chris, do you have what you need? Do you need a formal motion, do you?
No. So like I said, you'll, you'll vote on this formally when we get back from them, actual implementation.
That's good. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next item, discussion and consideration of January membership sales to the LBC.
So this is a little deceiving. I put January because that's when the building is supposed to open, but what we want to do is offer those that are buying a one-year membership kind of a free month because we don't know when they're going to be able to get in there. So if it starts January 22nd, their membership would start on January 22nd and then end basically on January 22nd of the following year. So they kind of get a month more or less for free, or February 22nd.
Okay.
So it's, it's a month free.
From whatever the start date is.
Yeah, it's kind of a promo. So the one month and the three-month membership starts on the date that it opens or the day that they first open, and we don't necessarily need to worry about pre-selling those as much as we need to pre-sell memberships. And it's hard, I will give Matt and Sarah credit, it's going to be hard for them to sell these memberships without having to. So I think to entice them.
That's all it takes.
Yeah, to, to get this is basically offering kind of a free month. So again, it's, it's January, but we can't waive fees as staff, so if you're okay with that, that's going to be kind of our marketing enticement to get those year-long memberships sold sooner rather.
So are you, so in, in your example, January 22nd, is that the example open date or when somebody comes in and buys their?
That might be the example open date.
Okay, right. But just, so if I come in and I, in December and I buy an annual membership, I get 13 months from whenever it opens. Is that the idea?
So I'm basically telling you at the time that you come in to buy it and you're going, so when do I get to, to start utilizing this?
Yeah.
January?
So is that only on the prepaid year or is it for people that sign for the year even if it's a monthly pay? Do either?
It's based upon the annual membership, so it doesn't matter how you buy it.
So either one of those.
We just want to, we want to pre-sell the annual memberships. They're important to getting those set up and take care of now. So it doesn't matter how you establish it, it's just on that yearly membership. Those that are buying one month and three months, though, it will just start.
Whenever it opens, it opens and that's that.
I think it's a great idea, you guys. I think it's a very creative way to, to meet this challenge that you have. So, good job.
Again, with this one, do you need a motion?
This one we do because, like I said, we can't waive.
Yeah, okay. So entertain a motion to waive the.
I'll move to approve of offering the month of January free, or actually one month free, to those individuals that purchased year-long memberships.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of nonprofit charges for the LBC.
So this is another area that has kind of come up in our discussions and we weren't exactly sure how the council felt about this because whatever we decide, obviously, they're going to be in front of you, so we thought we'd have this discussion first. So we know that we're going to get pressured from nonprofit organizations.
Is it technically nonprofit or people who call themselves?
Yeah, exactly.
So the example that I use, my kids play for a club and they are a designated nonprofit, but it is a club organization. I would not expect them to walk through our doors and say, we're a nonprofit and we have this for free. How do you distinguish between that and the Boy Scouts or some other organization that is a nonprofit? So what staff is proposing to council, if it is a governing entity or the CDG, then.
So defined as a 501(c)(3)?
Not even defining that because there are others that are.
Okay.
Back to his example.
We are saying governing bodies.
Okay, some of those leagues are defined that way? Okay.
Governing bodies or the CDG.
So give me an example of a governing body. Like, what are we talking about?
Mount Vernon.
Oh, oh, like a governmental?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Mount Vernon, Lynn County.
I thought you were thinking like, like the, the executive board of the League of Women Voters or something.
So the DOT wanted to come and hold a meeting there, we wouldn't charge the DOT. I mean, so State of Iowa, federal government.
Sure.
City of Mount Vernon.
Okay.
Or the, like I said, our local CDG. But everybody else, we would treat on a case-by-case basis. So unfortunately, the only thing, the only way to handle this is to bring individual rentals in front of the council if they're asking for us to waive the fees. And there is no set of rules that we can come up, we've discussed this every which way but Sunday. There's really no set of rules that we can establish that is going to, to cover us. So I think what we would like to do, again, is basically establish those organizations are allowed to use the building rent-free and then everybody else, if they want a waiver of the fees, would have to come and present to council and then ask or tell you why. That's the only way that I can see us doing this. I don't think it's, it should be a staff rule. I think they should have to, if they really want a waiver of the fees, they should come here and tell you why.
Yep.
Hopefully, we can get to the point where we develop guidelines, you know, just based on our learning so that we don't have to.
Yeah, as we track, we can kind of establish, yes, this makes sense, and we can kind of come up with a quasi-list of procedures, but I think to start, the only way to be fair is to kind of handle it and just say that you're charging everybody until we see what's.
And I'm not saying this is the answer, but was there a discussion regarding not offering, like, I don't mind the hard line at government versus not, right? That that is a nice, easy split, but was there a consideration of not even having the option of a waiver, but maybe like a percentage discount? If you're a legit 501s, you've got the paperwork, you show us whatever, and here we go, or?
Yeah, again, those designations are pretty open.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the scary part about it is, they're really pretty open and our fear is if we allow a discounted rate automatically, then those designated Cedar Rapids, Marion, you know, anybody, hey, if you go over here, you can have.
You can get it for a bunch cheaper. Okay, I see, yep. No, I got, yeah, I got you.
So that's kind of our fear, you know, not, not closing the door, just requiring them to come here. And again, if one of our local organizations come and you feel that, you know, as a local fundraiser or something like that, that it's important, great.
Right.
They can go through the process and ask for a waiver of the fee and we'll just handle it that way if that's okay.
Yep.
That's how we're going to basically sell it to the public. We want to make sure because this is something that will likely end up in front of you at some point, so.
Would this government thing apply to political events too? See, that's, it kind of worries me there.
No.
Okay.
Politically, events are not technically.
Because they're government officials.
Well, not in the capacity when they're running your office.
They're candidates.
Even though the candidates themselves are government, if they're campaigning, that's a campaign. So we would do the same thing if the RNC or DNC wanted to hold the event there, again, they could either pay the fee or they would come and ask you for a waiver. Now, the only trick to that, though, I should say this, is if you waive it for the DNC, you're going to waive it for the.
Right, exactly. That's what I want to make sure of, and I also want to make sure of that if the RNC or the DNC come in here, that you say, yes, you can pay the fee DNC, but you can't RNC. I don't want any discrimination going on here. If one of them wants in, they get in. If the other one wants in, they get in, whether you agree with what they say or not.
That, that would be the one challenge, like I said, especially when it comes to politics, you have to be very stable across.
Yeah, exactly.
So whatever you would establish for one, you would establish for the other.
That's what I want to make sure of. That's what I want to make sure of.
I would say right now, we're not waiving the fee if they want to go.
Exactly, which I understand.
And that would be up to you.
Good. And we don't need a motion on this one, correct?
No, I just wanted direction.
Yep.
So that's how we're going to proceed and make sure.
All right, next item, discussion, consideration of Main Street Iowa Program.
Actually, before we leave that, I'm sorry, just real quick. If that, so that's where we're going to go. I think we're probably going to want to have some sort of form, you know, if you want to waive it. I mean, because we're going to want, who are you? Are you a legit 501? You got to show us the paperwork or, you know, like, here's what we need to know before you show up.
We'll create an application.
Yep.
We just wanted to make sure that before we did that, that you knew that it was going to come here.
Sorry.
That's a good point.
That's a good question. Okay, next item, discussion, consideration of Main Street Iowa Program Agreement.
So this is something that we do every two years. The National Main Street Representative was here today. I toured with her and Joe, drawed her downtown. She's here to look at, I believe, about six places in Iowa over a two-day trip. So if Joe were here, he would tell you the countless number of dollars that have come into this community and the program. And I think we've won that open for business.
Every year?
For five years, ever since I've been here, we've won, so.
It's a no-brainer.
And we've split the grand prize twice, I believe, so.
And we're also being encouraged to participate in the national contest.
Yeah, so that's why she was here today. We're kind of talking about that. But it's a, we are also becoming the poster child of how to make your CDD slash Main Street person a city employee. And then, so.
Good.
Yeah.
We're being used as an example there, so. Yeah, it's good stuff.
All right, now entertain a motion.
To approve the two-year program, uh, uh, Main Street Iowa Program Agreement for the two-year cycle.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion, consideration of RC Rail Rental Arrangement at the new police station.
So when we purchased the church for the police station, we talked about the fact that it's 9,200 square feet. We might not need all of it. There's potential for revenue, as long as it were an entity that would fit with what was going on. So RC Rail has operated out of the school administration offices, I don't know how many years now.
Long time.
Long time.
So they've secured additional grant funding. They're going to add an employee and they need to move out of the district offices. So they did approach Doug and the, for the potential to come out to our, our new station. And what Doug and I are seeking is an opportunity to negotiate with them to come out there as long as we can open the west side of that building without, again, getting into some sort of major renovation. So the west side of the building, if you remember, has some offices and a bathroom already there. So it would be secure from the east side that we're using. It would be a revenue stream to kind of offset, again, some of the cost of, that we weren't expecting for utilities and insurance. So I have no problem as long as, again, as long as we're not going to open a can of worms from a building renovation standpoint. They have to know pretty soon and it's kind of a moving target. So we're trying to find that information out as quickly as we can, which is why we're asking, and to give us permission to kind of negotiate a lease agreement with them. I would expect that it would be somewhere between $750 and $1,000, depending on how much space they're, they're asking to lease.
Yeah.
Is that the market value for office rental?
Yeah, and I, I believe probably about what they're paying the school district now.
I would say we should know that they're paying the school.
So that's a.
Yeah, my only hesitation is just us not knowing exactly what we're doing with the building and how it's going to be configured, but.
Well, so it's not a, it wouldn't be a permanent.
Right.
Solution for them. I think they, they received a grant and an extension for five years, I believe. I can assure you, unless all of you have a money tree in your backyard, that we are not making any significant improvements in the next three or four. We are going to be making improvements. We'll get the officers down there. We'll talk about getting the vehicles down there. But beyond that, it is going, we're going to slow-play this or have to slow-play this a little bit.
That's our mission.
Yeah, whatever lease we did do, though, to answer your question, Scott, would be to make sure that it was open-ended enough that if, if we were going to move forward with a project, that we could provide them notice in.
Yep. No, and I would agree with Tom's point that it, it meets the mission of what's going on down there already.
Yeah, so they do already work together with their program and everything else.
So you just need a motion to start negotiating the rental agreement?
Correct. And we won't, I mean, we will do this in front of you. We just want the ability if, because I know RC Rail is kind of on our time crunch.
Yeah.
So.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. I would move approval of moving forward with negotiations between RC Rail and the city for space down at the new police station.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion, consideration of setting a public hearing date for the amended and restated Lynn County Fire District One slash City of Mount Vernon 208e Agreement for Fire Protection and Emergency Services.
So if you remember, this 2080 allowed us basically to enter into a situation where Lynn County Fire District One is now more or less contracting with the city. We will own the equipment, we own the building, so on and so forth. If something happens in the next 20 years, we have to buy them out. We kept the board intact, meaning they have some potential liability. And so we were going to, and just include them in as an additional insured. Well, ICAP came back and said, it doesn't specifically say that in the 2080, and it needs to. So what you will be adopting is an amended 2080 with that language in there, and that's really about it.
Makes sense.
So.
I would move we set the public hearing date for our next scheduled meeting, November 18th, 2019.
What's second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, the LBC Marketing Update. Chris?
So Matt and Sarah handed out to you what is the, going to be the proposed logo. DLBC is going to be the short version of the name. So Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center will be on the exterior of the building, signed that way. It will also be signed that way on the interior of the building by the donor wall, so on and so forth. But if you can imagine our staff having to say hello, welcome to the Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center every time. So one of the first things that De novo looked at doing is kind of creating a more simplified way for us to answer phones, try and put that on a T-shirt, you know, things like that. So they came up with the LBC. Matt has spoken to Ernie Burris and he's comfortable with what, what we've been doing so far. So what you see is three pages, the logo, kind of two different versions because we'll have some that will go on letterhead. But for the most part, it's consistent throughout with colors. And then the, what do they call those pages, sorry?
The website mapping.
Website mapping page. So just to give you an idea of what the pull-down menus are going to be. Kudos to Matt and Sarah who have been going back and forth with De novo. I'm just going to say kudos to Sarah because she's done a lot of this work. So we, and we have kind of gone through a number of different versions to get here. We, we literally, after the first rendition, we sat down and looked at each other at the table and a lot of staring. We, we liked it, but we don't love it. So thankfully, you know, De novo has been great throughout this process. They've been extremely attentive. But just wanted to get this in front of you as we start moving forward on the marketing pieces. One thing that I would say is there, use a lot of play on words, the LBC. You guys can come up.
Yeah.
So they have a like, one of the things that we did love when they, when they came up with the LBC is they had a lot of, I'm forgetting all of them now, but.
Learn, build, create.
Let's be creative.
Ah, okay.
Life is meant to be celebrated.
Yeah, life is meant to be celebrated. A lot of play on words with the LBC. So if I may introduce Sarah Boots, our Recreation Coordinator. I know a lot of you have met her recently, but I just want to formally introduce her. Yeah, so that's the direction. Plus, with the circles, we felt that they kind of overlap and that's kind of what this is seen as, is kind of the hub of the city, the hub of the area. A lot of the circles are going to be played on with the marketing theme of maybe you could have a ball coming out of them, a weight, a dumbbell, some things that could be utilized with the circles. So there's a lot of different marketing aspects that De novo has looked at with this logo as well. So we can do a lot of creative things with it. So that was the, the main point of going that route.
I just like it, it's, go ahead and say.
I was just going to say, did they say how they landed on the colors? I like them. I'm just curious to know how they landed there.
The colors are throughout the building a little bit, the furnishings.
Yeah.
The green, obviously, is a place older there. But there's also some teal and some bluish aqua, I guess you'd call it, without the building.
Give Sarah the mic.
I will say they kept trying to stick orange in there and we kept telling them to take it back out. So, you know, it was kind of like, think spring, they're just, that color palette.
Yeah, they're fresh.
Energetic.
It does kind of remind me of like a retro NBC TV logo, which is that kind of cool retro feel.
Well, we need the peacock on there then, don't we?
Thank you for not making it gray or white.
Yeah.
Black.
Although I will say one thing you guys need to make sure, make sure that this works, tiny, tiny is on a business card, as it does if it were going to be on an outdoor board. And also make sure they give it to you in black and white because of the sun.
Right.
You're going to want to see it in screens and how they want it done.
Done.
I just like it, it just flows. You know, it's a lot better than the LBC or LBFC, WCC. I mean, it's just, hey, let's meet up at the LBC.
Yeah.
You're going to know what it is and it's easy.
So we've purchased the domain, DLBC.com, so that'll be our website.
T-H-E.
T-H-E-L-B-C. Yep.
Yeah, I like it.
Sounds pretty hip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just don't do any YouTube searches for it, okay?
Oh, okay.
Somebody learned that lesson the hard way?
Um, back in the day, it was the LBC, ah, anyway. Let's keep moving forward. The answer is yes, yes. Somebody learned that.
Just don't do it at work, Matt.
No, no, it has something to do with the.
Rap music.
Long Beach County.
Ah, okay.
Hip-hop.
Excellent.
So you're going to have.
Somebody will.
We're going to have SEO, search engine optimism, optimization, uh, running. So we'll hopefully be in the front of a lot of the search engines with that.
You're going to have to have a strategy to take your current Facebook page into everyone.
Yeah, that's, absolutely, that's De novo's job, so I'm going to stay away from that one.
The wireframes look nice, though.
Yeah.
Those are the website.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done. Good.
Yep.
Anything else?
No, I don't think we're good.
Get her built.
Get her built. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
We're just going to make sure that we didn't see any, like, faces before we started producing.
Is there any rhyme or reason to the emojis on the website?
Yeah.
I mean, is.
They're just placeholders.
Yeah.
Legend is over here and this is what they mean.
Oh, okay.
It's just a wireframe. Static content.
It's a topic.
Oh, there, there is rhyme or reason.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, gotcha. Okay.
It's not going to be on.
No, I understood the, the layout. I just didn't, I thought, you know, they had just said, oh, this one would be cute against event calendar. That'll be fun.
I would say that we made the first marketing firm. So when we went there, there was a dog on the table. It was just hanging out in our meeting. I mean, this, we couldn't have picked a firm that didn't speak more Mount Vernon than this one, so.
Laid-back.
Yeah. It's been fun.
Good. All right. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
Yep, thanks, guys. Next item, Sustainability Committee. Chris?
So Tom had reached out last week. The Sustainability Committee has asked about the potential of moving from a committee, kind of an ad hoc committee, to a formalized board, board commission. It does offer some legitimacy to the committee and probably some more importance to having members on. It's kind of ebbed and flowed as we've had projects and not had projects. And of course, it's been on the back burner since we've had all of this kind of on our plate. But some of the things, obviously, that could be discussed is, you know, we now have close to 14 acres, I think, of new green freeway slash detention centers. I mean, there's so, there are some things that are now kind of being put in front of us, I think, that a more formalized commissioner committee would be, be okay. The only, the only thing that I had kind of mentioned back to Tom is my staff is getting stretched a little thin, so I can't guarantee that I'll have somebody at their meetings all the time. But if there's a council liaison, we would, again, the minutes is the biggest thing. So somebody at the board or committee would have to understand that.
Is there staff at all of the commission and board meetings now?
Um, not all. So Historic Preservation, for instance, only has us when needed.
Okay, but like Parks and Rec and?
Parks and Rec does.
Okay.
Planning Commission does. Housing Board of Adjustment does.
Because that's a change. I mean, that, well, that's going back to what it was. When I started on Parks and Rec, we had staff there. And then that went away and we just had a recorder for a long time. So we would do minutes and then they would be done later. So I'm glad to hear that. I just, I was unaware of that.
Housing Commission has Heather. She has actually Housing Commission, Planning Commission, and then Zoning Board of Adjustment, although Board of Adjustment does always need. Matt and Sarah will take Parks and Rec, obviously. No, and we don't do, necessarily do the minutes for every board or commission, but we'll continue to be there. Again, we're adding staff, but we're adding part-time individuals, so we can make it when it becomes available and try not to steal Tom's thunder because he's been attending the meetings, so.
I'm not demanding, pushing, really pushing this hard because I realize that it is, it's more work. It's, you know, posting, it's the minutes, it's formalizing a lot of things that have honestly been done pretty casually. Yes, it adds legitimacy. I'm bringing up the point from a couple of members from the group. That's why, but I did, I told my dude, and this is where it's here. I can live with it either way, but I just wanted to, you know, when I started out, I took over for Marion Taylor and I was very enthusiastic about it for a couple of years. Then I got away from it last year and then I realized that I need to get back into it this fall and we had a couple of meetings and then started to get, you know, get legs in the second iteration. And as part of that, you know, through looking at mission statements, values, proposition, how our representation from city staff and so on, and formalization of the process, legitimacy and so on. So that's why the issue comes forward. So that's, I don't want to.
How many members?
If it doesn't happen, but I am not demanding that it does.
How many members are currently on the?
I've got a mailing list of about 15 people. And we got, first week, we probably had nine, 10 people.
Pretty good.
And all I've done so far is just list what, you know, the 10 or 12 things we did a couple of years ago that we've done. And then an open list of other open items that we could do and who's interested in attacking this or attacking that or whatever.
How long does it usually take us to put one of these together? Like, if we said, yeah, let's do this. I mean, by the time we do. Okay. So at least three meetings.
It'll take a month and a half, for sure. Probably closer to two months. But I would make the suggestion, because we found this out with the Housing Commission, we started with nine and went back to seven.
That's what I was wanting.
We'd probably start with seven. That doesn't deter or prevent anybody from coming to the meetings, but we have seven established positions. The nice part about this is, is we can, we can do this. And then, again, if we start to lose legs or, I mean, it is one that you could go ahead and rescind the ordinance and kind of decommission the commission, but.
Well, I mean, the way, I mean, Deb was vigorously nodding her head and I, I'm in agreement on that. And my thought is, especially with the bypass coming on and all of the development that's. all of the development that's going to be happening out there, to start lending legitimacy to, not that they were, you know, some bastard committee before this, but, you know, lending that more formalized.
Yeah, I think the only thing that you would have to start thinking about is what specifically you want them, so if you look through your codebooks or at the code online, you know, Planning Commission has kind of a specific set of things that they go for, Parks and Rec, so that would be my only comment as feedback in the direction as far as what it is you want them to kind of be in charge of. I have no issue with it, like I said, I just won't guarantee that we'll have a staff person at all the meetings, but that hasn't, I mean, that's kind of been the case to date.
And I don't think they need to be.
No.
Unless there's a hot button item or something.
Right, unless there's some specific issue, where having somebody there would be handy, but that can be a one-off kind of deal, so.
I like the idea, because I think it shows our commitment to sustainability, I think it's important, our commitment as a community.
I do, too.
Chris talked earlier about, I can't remember what the item was, but it, it's about for feel, mother and cultural type of thing, if anything, this type of sustainability committee is also that same vein, that is, culture and.
Good, I think you have what you need.
Go.
Yep.
Okay.
So De novo just wanted to see if that's comfortable, and then what we can do is, again, if, I guess I would ask that sustainability kind of look at the existing ordinances and just kind of give us, here's our game plan, this is what we would like to be in charge of, and then once we have that established, I can kind of create, it only takes an hour to create an ordinance, but then we can start that process and start kind of walking down that road.
Yeah, maybe by the first next year, it'll be up and going, yeah, yeah. All right, next item, reports, I don't have much to report, other than obviously get out and vote, and then kudos to Nick and his team for the snow slash leaves slash big mess that we had last week, so I know that was not easy, I had a few calls on one of my leaves getting picked up, but I think for the most part, everybody understood they were covered under snow or wet, and so, so kudos Nick to you and your team for that. And then, anything, council committee, anybody have anything?
Pool committee on Wednesday.
Correct. It'll be the inaugural meeting.
Is the scope of that looking at both the outdoor pool and a possible addition to the wellness center?
My understanding is it's evaluating possibilities.
To answer your question, yes, I mean, I think all possibilities are on.
It's narrowing the funnel at this point, is what it is.
Everybody, I think, coming to the meeting is going to have their version, and I think for us, it's an opportunity for staff to kind of explain.
That's.
Yes.
The parameters of indoor versus outdoor, what we would have to do, the cost difference between the two.
Reality.
And then, you know, hopefully that that works into making some recommendations. We know we have issues at the pool, our existing pool, we aren't going to be able to turn a blind eye every year to those issues, so now that we've kind of answered the bypass, the wellness center, and we're on the tail end, I love punishment, and this is my punishment is to move on to the next, next issue that's kind of hanging out there, and that's, that's it.
But I think it's good to address it, because people are asking, and people are talking about it, and people have been, for the people that I spoke with, there's a lot of people interested in being involved, and I think, you know, they'll get involved in the research, and I'd also like to see that committee communicate their findings with the rest of the community.
I think it's all about informing and educating the true cost, and.
Yeah, and I think there is, I mean, from high school students, correct, Matt?
Pardon my sight.
High school students on the committee.
Do you have some high school students coming?
So we are, we did our best on, and it is open to everybody, so as I've talked to people, if you're interested, by all means, please come and listen. Our goal is to communicate with as many people as possible, Deb is invited, that leaves a spot for one more council person.
You're going already?
If you would like to attend as well. No decisions, obviously, are going to get made at this initial meeting, but it is, it's basically an opportunity for staff to say, this is what we're here for, and then kind of open it up to, to the committee and talk about ideas and concerns, but, you know, you're going to see at the end of this fiscal year that I kind of fall one there, we spent more money at the pool than we have, so it's going to be more negative than it has been in the past, but again, slapping something on it.
And that's not going away.
Calling it good isn't going to work for us anymore.
Well, and best to examine these questions before there's some sort of emergency where we got to make some huge decision with a lot of zeros on it.
Yeah, or we're digging a shed slash lean-to on the back because we're.
Do we know if Cornell will be involved in these conversations at all, based off their future possible projects?
Yes, so I'll say in a roundabout way, Deanne Rexroth has been invited, she also works out at our pool, so she will be there, and I think can provide a Cornell update, or at least kind of be in the liaison, going back and forth, it worked out well.
Yeah, that's crucial.
Yeah.
Competition pools, a little different scope than just a community pool.
Yeah.
We're talking about.
Well, good, I'll be, I'll look forward to the work. Anything else, anybody? Chris?
Real quick, I had in there that Elliott Park was ready for seed, if you drive by there today, it actually did get seeded. The one thing you'll notice is, we did gravel, that's because our expectation is if people do use it, we'll have porta potties out there until we get a permanent restroom out there. Yes, it looks odd, there are some, where the meetings are going to be, where we didn't put gravel, so if you go out there, and we have kind of this eclectic-looking fields, but once grass grows, you'll be able to see it, and the permanent parking lot gets there, it'll, it'll be a nice addition to the community, but yeah, again, I think we saved, it's a significant amount of money, bringing that bulldozer in, for how long do we have, three, three months or four months?
Both sites?
Yes.
Four months.
Four months. So we did two sites, all announced, about $24,000, the Elliott Park site alone was, the bids were $50,000.
Uh-huh. No-brainer there.
Yeah.
Job well done.
Excited that we've got a staff that can pull it off.
All right, anybody else have anything?
I left the last council's meeting early, when's the next?
So they, they were pushed back, and I kind of sent that out in an email, so the plan is, the fourth Monday, I believe, is, one says the 24th, if that's not right.
25th.
It's that Monday of Thanksgiving week.
25th.
25th, yeah.
We'll be at the joint meeting with the council and planning commission, then planning commission will have a public hearing the second Wednesday of December, and you will have your public hearing then the following week. Again, if there isn't any grave concern as we go through this process, if there is, that process can be long, so, there's no.
No rush.
Although I did get a email today that it might actually be open tomorrow. The bypass can be opened this week.
Really?
I don't either.
Doesn't look like it's possible, but.
No, it doesn't.
I didn't either, but.
No, they can open up the one side and get the.
Yeah, they can.
Yeah, they can open the one side.
They got to tear that whole side down.
Yeah, not the full thing.
The whole thing won't be open, I would say, until next summer, but.
That's, okay.
The bypass itself.
Sounds like, there's no way.
So they're just going to transition from the two lanes that they've transitioned to on the west side, to the two that they've already constructed, and although, the traffic will go that way, the only bad thing is, I think, if you're coming in that direction, I'm not sure you'll be able to turn while they're doing that construction into town, you're going to have to go to the off-ramp and come back, so. But we haven't, that's about the only information we've got from the DMT, so hey, it's opening.
All right, anything else? Otherwise, no further business, meeting stands adjourned.